Hey, welcome to This Week in Pharmacy. I'm your host, Todd Urie, founder of the Pharmacy Podcast Network. We are live in the studio. You are not going to believe who I have in the studio today. This is awesome. You know, we do so many Zoom meetings and we're using StreamYard right now to collect and that's great and that's fun. But when you actually get to have someone in the studio with you who I admire and have as a content developer for years, the one and only Matthew Zachary, if you don't know him, look him up on MatthewZachary.com. Matthew, welcome to This Week in Pharmacy.
What kind of bet did you lose to get me here in the studio?
In Podunk, Brownsville, Pennsylvania, you're under a little bit of a cultural shock, I'm sure, when you came down here in your Uber.
Well, yes and no. I went to Binghamton University, upstate New York, so I'm familiar with the Appalachia Southern Tier. Different anthropology, but very valuable to the country.
And I was telling you about first iron bridge in America was built in Brownsville, Pennsylvania. In the mid 1800s, we were considered one of the most bustling northeastern cities in the entire United States. But just like so many other steel towns, everything collapsed. Now it's kind of rebuilding, but it's the home of the Pharmacy Podcast Network because of Match.com and meeting my wife.
Match.com did something right.
That's right. And but when I met you four years ago, you were so edgy from a perspective of finally, finally, finally giving the real non powdered manipulated testimony of patients and what you were doing. And that was just my perception of you. You had been working in content development since what, 1996, 1919, early 2000s?
And I never liked the word content.
Yeah, I know.
It's just like, I think it's a made up word. I mean, it's a real word in the dictionary. But I just do shit.
Yeah.
Right? And I never think about it. I'm a musician by trade. Do I make content by writing a song? No, it's a song, right? Am I writing an article? It's an article. Yes, content is the making shit that other people can consume.
Yep.
But yeah, I've just been this way. I've written music, I've written soundtracks, I've written columns, I've produced X, Y, and Z. Sure, it's content, but I've always been this guy that wants to be on stage and tell the audience all sorts of good shit that they need to know and entertain them.
Yeah. Talk to the audience, tell people listening.
The chair is very comfortable, by the way.
You like that?
I stole the chair. This is Todd's chair. I stole the chair.
Yeah, you're in the commander's seat because this is a special opportunity for us to. I've had an issue as a podcaster of crossing the bridge between who I want.
Steel bridge?
The steel, the iron bridge.
Yeah.
The iron bridge of content development is all been for my pharmacists. It's been for our profession. It's been for HCPs. Pharmacy Podcast Network hasn't really had a solid patient pathway to finally get the voices in our network and to our pharmacist and to our business decision makers of what's really happening from the trenches because of lack of time, because of lack of connection. So having you trickle into this at this level in the stages that we're kind of talking about going, this is special to us because it's time to get patients, it's time to get more people involved in this and talking with pharmacists too.
I mean, it's unsaid too, that pharmacists are, I want to go, not a limb, but you're probably the most trusted profession in medicine. If you're going to the right pharmacy.
Statistically, pharmacists are the second most trusted to nurses.
Yeah, nurses. But I think it speaks volumes to like, where's the doctor in all of this? And where's this? And where's this? And where's this? So we're the same age.
Basically.
There were really no chain pharmacies growing up in the seventies and eighties and maybe the early nineties. So you had a relationship with the people. You knew their names. They knew who you were. It was like Norman Shears. You walked in and they just knew what you were, what you wanted. My son's need this. You have any Mercuricrome? No, I, you know, it's kind of, I used to work back then. And I mean, hopefully people listening or watching this will nod their heads, but we've lost that humanity with which should be a human experience with the person helping us live our lives better on the right prescriptions when we need them.
Yep. The claim to the fame of your evolution as somebody that's been in publishing is
content.
Content.
Damn it.
See, the content word is stupid cancer.
Yeah.
So talk to our listeners of what is stupid cancer? Tell us that history. If you're listening and you don't know what this is, Google it. Stupid cancer.
It's very Googleable. We were the first in SEO.
You invented, yeah, exactly.
We kind of invented it. So I'm a 29 year brain cancer survivor. I was supposed to go to grad school because I was a film composer and a counter pianist and plan B became plan A and I went off working in advertising instead when they told me I'd be dead in six months. So here I am 29 years later, fuck those guys. So but like anyone that, I think the issue was that I wasn't a kid. I wasn't an older person. I was in my early twenties, which is the time when you're supposed to be jumping off roofs and doing stupid shit and getting laid and getting drunk. And that's what you're supposed to be doing. Maybe, maybe not you, maybe me. Maybe you, I don't know.
No, certainly not me. I was a very shy individual. I didn't blossom in that way until I was in my twenties.
Okay. Well, good for you then. It's about damn time. But I, having gone through the nineties in my twenties alone, I had no idea it was possible to find somebody that understood. Holy shit, I'm 21 and given a death sentence and I lost my entire career because I couldn't play piano anymore. But it took like six or seven years to finally meet somebody like me while I'm miserable in this plan B that I didn't really ask to be doing. And he introduced me to Livestrong. And it's pre heyday. Everyone remembers the Livestrong, the wristbands and it's a cultural phenomenon. And as an ad agency guy, I love the brand. Most people didn't think of Livestrong as a brand. You don't know what brands are. Apple's a brand. Nike's a brand. Is cancer a brand? So I really absorbed myself into the Livestrong ethos. And I learned a lot about opportunities that I didn't even know were possible. The least of which was that Gen Xers like us who were in our twenties in the nineties and early 2000s had no voice in cancer advocacy. Pediatrics, you're never going to turn away bald kids. That's just the way it is. And older people, oh, sorry, grandpa's got cancer. You're 80. You live your life. And there just needed to be this radically different narrative on what it was like to be affected by cancer when you're not six or 60. Livestrong sort of set the bar for that and I just took it and rode with it. So I started stupid cancer, a nonprofit in 2007 as the first, I guess, we get, you know, when you say what you want to say, it's just the way it is. So it's like the first international brand for young adult cancer. And it revolutionized an international narrative on rights, roles, ownership, responsibility, voice, conversations, communities, brought together millions of people who didn't want to be pitied, who didn't want to feel pink or yellow or color based on your cancer, who didn't want to be forced to fundraise. It's like, hey, you have breast cancer. Come over to this nonprofit and now raise money for us. Meanwhile, you're dying and broke. Like it was a very different way of thinking about engaging. And it became a juggernaut and it's still a juggernaut. I stepped on five and a half years ago and it's still the Google it, kids, stupid cancer.
Yeah.
It was very disruptive at the time. And it was disruptive just enough to still get funding because I couldn't say fuck cancer. There are plenty of fuck cancers now. They don't get any funding, right? But it was just edgy enough to compete and bring a different level of relevancy to not about cure, it's about community, quality of life, a lack of like ending isolation, giving you permission to be really angry, but a community to like the club you never wanted to be a part of, but once you're here, it's a party.
Yeah. What was the vehicle initially to get the messaging out? Was it the podcast? Was it your blog? Like, how did that cultivate?
Right. So this is like MySpace era. There was no Facebook. There was no Google. I'm fucking old. YouTube was barely there. LinkedIn was there. LinkedIn was like, oh, four, but no one really started using it. So I'm a tech nerd and there was such an onslaught of how can I help? I want to build this with you. This is what I wished I had had or what I didn't know I needed. This is the brand. This is, this is, I need this. It's medicinal for thousands of people. How can I be a part of stupid cancer taking over the world? And oh, why don't we build a merch store? So Livestrong had the wristbands. Let's do the anti wristbands with middle fingers on them. Let's make funny T-shirts that said, breasts are for losers. Who needs ovaries? I have one ball and I'm happy. These are the shirts we made, eyebrows, fuck them, right? These are the shirt. So a lot of it was old school grassroots, like T-shirts. And there were no hashtags back then. They were called slogans or whatever the hell they were. Word got out somehow. And I think the initial grassroots that mattered most was I called up all the cancer centers that I kind of knew through Livestrong. And I said, we're building an army of Gen Xers. You want our shit at your hospital? And they said, sure, send us flyers. So we printed up, remember paper?
Yeah.
Todd, paper, right? There's no pain here. Here. Paper, paper. We printed up flyers and paper. We physically mailed them all over the country that said, got cancer under 40? Totally sucks. We're so sorry you're here, but join the party. So it was really like organic grassroots. The fact that someone put a microphone in front of my face and said, how'd you like to host a talk show? I was like, okay. So like, it just word spread that there's this, this edgy young guy, young at the time, right? 32 years old, who's yelling into a microphone like Marc Maron and Howard Stern, an hour live every Monday. And if you missed it, you missed it. Sorry.
Yeah.
Every night at eight o'clock on Mondays, we had like thousands of people listening to the streams. And all I did was just, I wrote a rant. We updated people on what's going on in the country. I profiled one particular nonprofit every episode. We had a survivor story and then we just covered the news. It was like regular, just I built a regular show. And that is how, between the T-shirts and grassroots, word of mouth, the radio show and I don't know, like DSL. Dial up a DSL.
That's so wild.
The origin stories of all of this and it all led to taking advantage of Facebook in 2008. So it led to 08 Facebook when Obama was running. But like, what the hell is Facebook?
Yeah.
Right? And like, we gotta get on this Facebook. And back then it was totally shitty, but when we told, we're on Facebook. Like, what the hell is Facebook? Okay, let's go to Facebook. So we were the irreplicable story because it was a moment in time that can't happen again, but we were the first on Facebook. So everyone glommed onto stupid cancer on Facebook. And that's really how it started.
It's incredible. I love it because it was using something that was so novel, technology, social media was just a baby. And you were on it immediately. And it's why I think that you were so relevant because it was finely honest content from somebody that was experiencing something so horrific and wrecking your life and getting through it. But now you were able to get rid of the fluffiness and some of the over marketing of cancer and really drill it down to the perspective of actually who's going through it versus all these other entities who are trying to take advantage of cancer.
Well, I don't blame the groups that do that because they're not marketing companies. They're there to raise money for their missions. They're also not like entertainers. I happen to be an entertainer. I happen to be just a nevishy funny guy that plays piano and writes music. And the veil of authenticity had never really been broken in cancer, cancer content, use your word. Narratives, communication, branding strategy. I just spoke what was in people's heads. And it was risky. You know, if a group like Susan Giacomans back in the day, which was all just pink nausea and nonsense, or to speak honestly about breast cancer, they might get a little more reputational credit. But they couldn't do that. They couldn't say fuck breast cancer. But what's, the secrets of theater, how do you get into the audience's mind? Is you have to help them feel something. Not, you don't talk to them or at them. You talk with them.
With them.
And that's theater. That's all just like the psychology of audience. It's Dale Carnegie's How to Win Friends. You talk through with beyond into people's spirits and their energies and you get them to resonate and shake their heads. So telling someone, we're sorry you're here. Give us money. Here's a Benetton photo of all different colored women with breast cancer. Doesn't really help. I don't want to see happy people in my cancer ads. But you get a guy up there like me and my cohorts that build this with us and say, this fucking sucks. We're not better or worse. We're just different. We've got to get on with our lives. We want to date. We want to fuck.
Yeah.
You know, we want to go to college. We want to get a job. It's harder than being 22 when you're well. Like those sentences resonated with people. And it was just a very different way at the time. Now it's standard of care in culture to talk this way about everything. You know, cancer was kind of still a whispery thing back then. Livestrong kind of made it more discussable. But now there's like movies with cancer in them and there's cartoons with cancer in them. And it's like, oh, you got the cancer? Got to brush off the cancer right now. Like it's become almost like this surreal and name zeitgeist in the world. And but just being first to do that was a risk, but it paid off.
Yeah. So you have an audience of a bunch of pharmacists listening to you right now. Your experience through your own therapies, some of your experience through your pharmacist and pharmacy was unfortunately canned because the markets do that sometimes, canned things. But you had some experiences where connection with pharmacists that, because they care, they're, sometimes they're held hostage because of the processes that are in place that don't allow them to care because they don't give them enough time. But this is why people became pharmacists. They were nerdy. They loved chemistry.
Wait, you're nerdy?
I'm not nerdy because I'm not a pharmacist. I am nerdy, but I'm, but I'm not as smart as they are in different ways, more of creativity. But I know pharmacists. I know the way that they think in the school and in the analyticalness. And they want to make sure that they're right because if they're not, people die. Like the, the whole genre of what it is to be a pharmacist. Talk to our listeners about your experience in connecting with those kinds of people that made a difference in what you were going through.
I'm going to do this wrong because I'm old, but I'm going to start with a little heart. I don't know how to do the heart.
There it is.
Is that the heart? Hi. In all seriousness, pharmacists are the living, breathing, unsung heroes of wellness in the world. You don't get enough credit. You get thrown under the bus. It's rarely your fault. And I wish I could help you elevate that reputational credit you deserve. And if I can do anything to do that, that is part of my aspiration in life. More people need to feel than be told. And that is what pharmacists do. Thank you.
That's a great clip. I'm using that clip.
Okay.
That's awesome. But that's true. I, I talked to so many.
You're welcome, by the way. Try the veal. I'm out.
I'm out. I'm done. MatthewZachary.com. I talked, I'm going to conferences. This is conference season right now and I get two types of.
Is that like bath season?
It is. Okay. But I don't, you have to have a license. You have to have the press pass. But if, if I talk to people at these conferences, there is the, there's the two sides. There's the administrative business side of our sector of healthcare, which I always feel like we sit at the kiddy table of healthcare. They always put the pharmacist in the corner and/or pharmacy in the corner. That's person number one is the administrator business person. Person number two is the physical pharmacist who once they realize that you know what they're going through and you show based on how you talk and what you talk about, that there's understanding and empathy and you're one of them. The conversation is so different than the business side of it. And what I want to do is meld them together better. So it's much more natural. And you were so good at melding sincerity with the business of publishing. And that's important because if, if you don't have it, you can't fuel the money to keep it going. It just, it dies out because you have to go get a job.
Right. You said the magic word though, which is empathy. Because empathy is either it's innate in who you are and comes with you to what you do. Or you try to realize you don't have enough of it and you try to learn. Or you just don't care and you're apathetic and you're a mechanic. Own it. But you know, nurses and pharmacists have a lot in common, social workers, you know, you're, you're in the quality of life space. You're like the bartenders, right? Or the sommeliers of fuckery, right? You try to really understand that we're people just like you. And we're here to give you a guardrail, a handrail, a hand. Medicine can be very caustic and just serbic and very binary. And some people need their doctor to just be, I'd rather have a mechanic that can help me than an empath.
True.
And hopefully there's someone else in the circle that makes up for that gap. But it does go unsung that that's the magic word that is largely missing because there's no money in empathy. There's no money in it. So if you could find the weirdness of people like me and other advocates that have a chemistry, a pension for, you know, a little bit of a more disastrous perspective on getting people to laugh a little bit. It's rare, but it really does toe the line between getting business done and helping people have a less shitty experience.
The reason why I was excited that you entered the space of the business and publishing and the content developer side of the pharmacy sector of healthcare is because you bring in a perspective that I am very thirsty for, and I know our listeners are. And that is moving things forward. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is pharmacists in the chain space, the CVSs, the Walgreens, Rite Aid, that's dying and having a hard time right now. They've gotten the crap knocked out of them. You know, these pharmacists who put their life into doing this have been driven based on the business models, unfortunately, to being grounded out or grinded out, I should say, grinded to, you know, to their burnout and going through. But right now, we're kind of in a rebirth. PBM reforms finally reaching.
Finally.
Finally, reaching all this national recognition. People finally know what a PBM is, whereas you know, what the heck was a PBM? So it's time to bring the patient.
Pharmacy bullshit menagerie?
Exactly. Exactly. But you understand it because you called it out as a cancer patient. You called out the bullshit.
Yeah.
So now is the time where we can start tapping into people like you to call out the bullshit of the, of what's taken hostage. What, what took pharmacy hostage? Well, it was the well.
Greed.
Yeah, exactly. And back when PBMs first entered mid eighties, all they were was an administrative function that was cents on the dollar, right? 10 cent prescription fee for the administrative side. Now it's flipped. It's like this prescription now costs $1,400 and 1,600 of that 1,400 goes to the PBM and the minus 200 comes from the dispensing pharmacy who's being put out of business because they wanted to help somebody.
Right.
And this is now, if we tried to call this 10 years ago, if you were sitting here and we were podcasting even five years ago, this would not resonate nor connect with the next phase of where healthcare is going. Now it actually is the Matthew Zachary flavor. It's time to turn up that heat because now it's going to resonate. Now it's going to connect because the consumer, the taxpayer, the, the person that's going through healthcare, the average Joe and Betty is finally going to be able to say, now I understand.
That's accurate. And the rise of the patient advocate as a consumer is a wonderful trend. I was talking about this a decade ago, something called Consumer Oncology, which is if you start to treat patients like consumers and give them activist ways to fuck back, they will rally against that. That's what happened in young adult cancer. We found the right patients, the right age to realize that we need to band together, face the same direction and we can accomplish things with no agenda. And that led to fertility rights that led to employer benefits, that led to quality of life, standards of care, practices, guidelines. It even led to ACA to an extent. This, this no precedent condition was in the interests of every Gen Xer and younger in the country. If we're going to get sick without, you know, asking for it, we shouldn't be paying a price for the rest of our lives. So that's a huge win to get everyone to face the same direction. But you have to give them like a destination to go to. And until they realize they have the power to do something through this unification, we haven't really had a revolution like that in the country in a very long time. So we start to think about what do we need Americans to face the same direction for? Stop getting fucked by healthcare, period. What does that look like here, there and there and there? And if you rally the right people to do the right thing, things will systemically change and bend to the will of the consumer. And that's exactly what this is about. How do we get, it's not even how do we get, they're already there. They just need to activate angry patients. Say, we deserve better. It's a state initiative. It's a ballot initiative. It's not federal. And these things can happen at a time, but they can happen now. And the real revolution is when patients control their own outcomes and stop being dictated to by the system.
Where's the balance between I have a bucket of money, I have people that need care. We spend the money on the people that need care first and whatever's left over after the care is profit. Now I just said in a utopia, you know, element of rules, meaning if I set the rules and we said, as long as the patient is cared for, and that means more than just the medication or the treatment or the operation. It also means, hey, are they, do they have transportation back home?
Right.
Do they have people to give them counseling through this situation? Is there stuff happening? We spend that money, whether that's tax money, whether that's private dollar. And then whatever's left over is the profit for the organizations that are kind of, but that's not the, it's the, it's, I've just described the absolute opposite. They're taking, they say, we don't have money anymore. We have to cut costs. Go out to, go to Google right now and anybody can find the cuts that are being made by CVS Aetna and United Health and Optum. And they're cutting, cutting, cutting. And it's usually people's jobs that are getting cut. And that is to salvage the same model that is the brokenness of healthcare. And they're saying, we still want to keep that profit pulling in. And what I want happening now with the FTC investigation and all this stuff is to finally build something anew that is starting with the patient and what they call, the key word is value-based care. This is value-based care, whatever that means, but putting the patient first, whatever that means. So putting them first, getting the care done. And then let's see what's left over. And if you can be efficient in doing it, great, you'll make more profit. But the reset just in the pharmacy sector is going to make a ripple effect. But I'm so scared with all the intelligent lawyers and algorithms and business models that they make that they're going to try to run ahead of this shakedown and build something that's the next monster. So it's, it's a, I'm a glass half full kind of guy, but it's, it is very fresh. I mean, it's frustrating. Somebody that's in this that sees pharmacist suffering.
I think the hot take on that is that healthcare isn't broken. It was built this way. It was designed this way from scratch. It was predetermined that this would be the scale when Kaiser Permanente and Richard Nixon came up with the HMO Act of 1970 something. It all started there. So it's unsurprising that they will, they will wriggle their way into anything that's profit based because it's shareholder driven. The larger question is, do the voters have the influence to fuck back? And not enough. And you could blame the president. You could blame the administration. You could, you could pick this secretary of whatever. It's, it's the government. It's not who's running it. Because the profit makers and the shareholders are not the government. They're the ones influencing the government. the government. And this is unsurprising. This should surprise nobody that this is how lobbying works. So there's no one single answer, but it has been proven, like with DOMA, or with, you know, these states rejecting, you know, the, the abortion rights, that, if you activate the right American voters with the right thing to do, they will activate on that. If there's a way to say, we're going to help you get less fucked by X, and his authenticity, legitimacy, there's relationship, reputation, sign up here to fuck back, they'll do it. They will really do it. And I strongly believe that. And that's where I can't help but think in the next four years, or five years, will bring considerable change to the advantage of the consumer, and the customer first, because we are never the end users.
Blue Shield of California just kicked their PBM to the curb.
Good.
And they're going to be using Mark Cuban Cost Plus Drugs.
I want to meet that guy.
I know. He, he, there's two sides of Mark Cuban, in my opinion. There's this brilliant entrepreneur that's the multi-billionaire that's also the philanthropist, and he's just amazing.
Yeah.
And then there's the liberal side of him that is so irritating, that I can't make the connection of the both. Even, he's so.
And the basketball guy.
Yeah, yeah. High five. But if, if, he literally has the extremes. He's the capitalist that has the philanthropy built in. But then there's the liberal. But anyway, the reason why I'm mentioning that is, he talked about disruption three years ago, when Dr. Alex, who helped to start Cost Plus Drugs.
Right.
And then he named it Mark Cuban Cost Plus Drugs.
Of course he did.
So when he first started it, I was super critiquing. Like, I was like, this is never going to work. It's going to be a fad, a flash in the pan, unless he involves community pharmacists, unless he gets the pharmacist literally involved.
Right.
And guess what? That's exactly what they're doing. And that's why he's going to be able to truly disrupt. Blue Shield, for freaking Blue Shield of California, told their PBM, get the hell out. I'm going to use, that is a major win.
It's a win.
In the dominoes that are now starting to finally fall, where you're, the consumerism is getting more powerful.
Yes.
And right here in Pittsburgh, there are two friends of mine that have opened cash-based pharmacies only. They take no insurance, and they're making it. Dr. Cal McCormick, Dr. Brandon Antonopoulos, both of them do not take insurance, and they're, they're, I'm not saying that they're blowing it up, right?
Right.
But they're both.
They're not driving Bugattas yet.
No, not yet. But they're making it. And it's working, where the community is like, wow, I have more control. Instead of always thinking that I need to pull the insurance card, they taught them, like, they used auto, auto insurance as an example.
Right, right.
Would you use your insurance for an oil change? Would you use your insurance for your brakes? Would you, no. You get in an accident, your car blows up, and you got 20,000 worth of damage.
Right.
You pull the insurance lever. And that's exactly what they've taught. They've, they've taught the consumer, they've taught their community, you don't need your insurance. So I, that's a trend that I want to see increase to force the engine to reset for the consumer.
Right. Again, if it's not oncology, where your treatment's $48,000 a day, and most Americans probably on regular generics that only cost a dollar, and you're paying $20 copays for these things. Yes, that's stupid. And there is a great educational opportunity. Again, it's, it's gonna, the flower's gonna sift based on income and all the usual determinants and, and the things that are pros and cons. But yes, going to a more consumer, or consumerist economic standard in this country is going to, that's part of the democratization, where we're not going to be beholden to insurance unless it's emergency insurance, right? You still need, ERs are free. You still need your primary care. You're going to still need these things. But why would you pay a $50 copay for something that you could just take? All right. So like, for me, I pay $130 every 90 days for one of my medications.
Okay.
This is after negotiating with, we can discuss the.
Yeah, that's a niche.
Fuckery story. But that, I don't do math, whatever 130 is times, how many, three times, four, whatever it is, 600 bucks. I'm making numbers, whatever it is. Could I be paying cash for that amount instead of going through insurance? Is my copay more than paying cash on top of what I'm already paying for my insurance in the first place?
Right.
It's an economics thing. I mean, most people aren't economists, but again, it goes back to what I think good orcs try to do, which is it's cheaper over there if you don't do this.
Yeah. Yep. And then they took advantage and kind of, there's, there's always, I always feel like there's two sides. You and I were having lunch before the recording, and we were talking about religion and, and just people in general. And there's always the two.
Religion. Always a fun conversation.
A whole new. So, but what we're saying is, there's always those two sides of the humans. There's the humans that ruin it for the rest of us humans, based on, you say, effery. And it's true.
I can say that word. You can't say that word.
The effery of humans. And, and it's always.
Shenanigans. How's that?
The shenanigans.
Okay.
Exactly. And, and they ruin it for everybody. And that's, we're finally calling that today.
Yeah.
There's, there's a bunch of Twitter basics coming back, too. They call it X. I'm going to keep calling it Twitter.
It's Twitter forever. Like Shea Stadium. It's Shea Stadium.
But it's coming.
There's no Citi Field. It's Shea Stadium.
Oh, I can't even say the name of the Steelers, Steelers stadium. It's, 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 it's the, it's a company name. We used to call it Three Rivers Stadium, and we called it the Pittsburgh, you know, Steelers stadium. And now it's a company with an A, an Atrion Stadium. I can't even say.
That's great.
And nobody wants it.
Great branding.
It's horrible. But talk to me about some of the ideas that you have to bring pharmacists in the messaging realm and publishing realm. How do we bring it closer to the true grassroots of what, what's really happening?
We have four more hours?
We only, we only have like four more minutes. You got to get it done in four minutes.
So one of the, I'll just speak directly to, to the audience. One of the terrible privileges that I've had as a 30-year brain cancer survivor, is that I've, I've been elevated to a sort of a national stage with millions of people listening to my show, or going to my talks, or whatever. And I want to use that for good. And I want to be everyone's voice, and sort of the advocate's advocate. And my, the opportunity here is to join me, join Todd, and what I'm building for the American voter, is the opportunity to understand in crayon, not just why it sucks, but what you can do to make it suck less. Because there are, for the first time, legitimate opportunities to be a part of something bigger than all of us, and clap back against the system. And I meant when I said, it's not broken, it's by design. But there are ways to game the system that people just don't know, but you know how people can game the system. You do it all the time. We walk into an independent pharmacy, and, oh, we can, we can do this for you instead. You wouldn't know that. But if I could tell 30 million Americans every year, your secrets, that's valuable and good for all of us.
Yep. It is. And it's the new way. It's the, there's so much, there were so many elements of what we've been through as consumers because of the entry of social media. And now we're calling it. We're calling people to the carpet. We're saying, that doesn't work, or that was a lie, or it's not that way. And I think the honesty and the transparency is going to help a new dawn of publishing and of content development that I'm so excited to be about part of. I've been waiting, you know, 2009, I did the first podcast, Blog Talk Radio. It sounded like crap. Put it out on.
God, did it sound like crap. My show, I still have my MP3s from '07. God damn, those are terrible, but they're awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. If you want to work with us, we want to work with pharmacists, pharmacy organizations. I'm going to be reaching out to a bunch of organizations that I think would be perfect to build additional content, additional publishing blogs, obviously podcasts, video, to really take advantage of the knowledge and guidance that you have, Matthew, in, in the world of healthcare, and, and efferring it.
De-shenaniganifying.
De-shenanagging it.
Okay.
De-shenanigans.com.
No, de-shenaniganifying. There we go. We're making up words, folks. Good words.
This has been a pleasure and honor to have you down here.
We're done?
Yeah, we, we got to wrap up. It's what, it says 39 minutes. I only got a couple more seconds. You have to make.
You've been very patient and tolerant. Thank you.
If you want to learn more, connect with Matt on LinkedIn. You're active on LinkedIn.
Yeah. I mean, if you just search Matthew Zachary, I've been around long enough, and I'm old enough that I'm the first 14 pages of a Google search. So if you can't find me, it's your problem.
It's your problem. Well, that sounds like a slogan, too. If you can't find me, it's your problem.
It's not me, it's you.
It's. Thank you for being here. This has been great. This can't be the last time. We got to come back.
To Brownsville.
To Brown, no, that's good. That's staying Pittsburgh. Let's go to a Steeler game or something.
That's, that's football, right?
If anybody wants to donate Steeler tickets for Matthew and I, we could build something around it. Let us know.
Okay. I want the Jack Nicholson seats, like when he goes to the Knicks game.
Exactly.
The Lakers game, sorry.
The, the, you know, UPMC has a box down there.
Oh, really?
I've been in that box.
Well, let's get Mark Cuban and get us Mavericks tickets.
I know.
Yeah.
Mark, come to Pittsburgh.
Jesus Christ, Mark, what's wrong with you?
See you guys later.
A pleasure. Thank you very much, guys.